Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled council meeting. All of the information is on the back wall if you want to see any paperwork. There's also an agenda there. We have an opportunity for people to do community notes at the beginning of the meeting. If there's something that you want to speak about that's not on the agenda, you get three minutes to tell the council what you're interested in. If it is on something that's on the agenda, you get to speak if you'd like on that agenda item after the council first gets a chance to do that. I think that's it. Fred, you want to lead the pledge?
My part of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, any community notes? Anybody has? Yes? Can you tell us where you are, please?
Yes, I'm LeBron Carter from now or before. I could have Counselor Thomas as my representative for a short period of time. Reading the newspaper, Central Maine article called "Enforce the Needs to Have Updated Reflects Complete Changes." I noticed that-
Is that on the agenda tonight?
I don't believe what we're talking about is actually, no. Counselor Stubbard had mentioned that he believes that since the ordinance was never changed, the city remained obligated to take out the trash at the curb whether or not they were in the purple trashpacks.
I think it is on the agenda, so you can speak during the agenda.
Okay, well, I'll just iterate two of that, and if we weren't obligated to be paying these bags, shouldn't we be giving our money back?
As I just said, this is on the agenda, so please take your seat. Thank you. Anybody else got anything they want to bring up that is not on the agenda? Yes, John?
And I'm not sure if Mike's got anything planned, but I would like to, at this point, recognize and give thanks to three members of our governing body who aren't going to be here much longer. Eddie LaHovitz, Eric Thomas, and Mayor Karen Heck, who have for more than two or three years now, three or four years, committed quite a bit of time and effort to making this a better city. Not only on this board, but on the comprehensive plan, the Charter Commission, and the Mayor's Coalition. I may not have always agreed with these other folks, but I did always respect their point of view and their enthusiasm for making this a better city. Our city government is losing some very big assets. That's not to say that the people coming on board won't do the job, but I do want to caution you folks, you have very big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to second that. They just say that it's definitely going to be a loss for the city. Ed, I've appreciated your knowledge in Robert's rules. I feel like you know rules that not many people do, and the historical knowledge of Eric and the financing. It's been great to have you guys to ask questions to. And of course, I'm in support of Mayor Karen Heck from the beginning. So I am excited for the new council, I'm excited to see what we can do and work together, and I'm excited to meet the new councilors. But it's definitely going to be a loss, and I'm going to miss you guys.
I'm not leaving.
You won't be going home?
You can trade lessons with your mother.
You work very closely, some long hours, and we've really dealt with some really controversial issues this year. I think probably some of the most historical controversies have happened in this last year or so, and I think we've all pretty much done it with respect, and we've done it, you know, in friendship, and we've had very passionate arguments, but we've also come together and worked as a council. So I think that says a lot for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. I honestly believe that the city has a number of amazing assets, and one of them is clearly a citizenry that is, for the most part, very willing to jump in and do some problem solving, and to do so with the understanding that we all have a love of the city, and we all want to see good things happen for it. And I totally appreciate the time that people have put in as councilors, as citizens, and I really, while I can't say I'm going to miss some of the parts of the job-
Oh, you'll miss us.
...I am very much looking forward to being engaged on the other side of this podium. So, thank you all for your hard work, because there have been a lot of things that have been very controversial, and will be, and continue to be. And I appreciate the work of the staff that makes the city run without a lot of us really even knowing what gets done. And I think that we're lucky to have the staff that we do, and the management, and that we are moving ahead with a new mayor. I don't know if any of you saw it today, but we actually co-authored an op-ed. So, the new mayor and the new council, I think, will be challenged, because there are a lot of financial challenges coming the city's and other cities' way. But I don't have any doubt that people will rise to meet them. So, thank you, thank you for our gift. I'm assuming I can still put this up there until, no, not the mayor, right? For the committee, for the, I mean, the remainder of the meeting. Yeah, put this back up there. So, thank you all. Yes, Scott, would you like to come up with community notes?
My name is Scott McAdoo, and I live at the South End, not Park, but Gold Street. I want to thank especially the Southern residents and the Southern Neighborhood Association, special thank to City Council, Mark Turner, his crew, and I think it's me and Marjorie. Hope I'm not spooking it too much. Finally getting one of the biggest ice swords in the city out of there. This is Gold Street, so I thank you, especially to Co-Partners of Garth Collin. We kind of, we might have kind of made him mad after a while of calling, but by the way, thanks, special thanks to him for finally getting that put down, and I think it looks, I don't know if anybody's come down and seen it there, but it looks awesome. Thank you guys.
Well, the squeaky wheel, you know, gets the grease, so I appreciate all of the work that the South End Neighborhood Association has done over the years to really move the city towards looking at that area and getting things done. So, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So, can I have a motion for an approval of the consent agenda?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Request that Resolution Number 174 dash 2014 be removed from the consent agenda.
Which resolution from?
On 74.
It's the rule of accounts, we have an error.
Okay, so, does someone want to move that amended?
Just throw it under good business where it belongs, although you have to take like three votes.
In moving the consent agenda, what?
When one person requests something, it comes off the consent agenda, it comes off the consent agenda.
Goes onto the regular agenda.
Great.
Back in the agenda, where it's under good business.
Where it should go.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Okay, then.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. You should show up, show up for this later, after this. Okay, so then, all those in favor of the consent agenda? Do you two vote? Yes? Okay, sorry. Too quick. Unfinished business, Order 174, 171 dash 2014.
Move by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for approval of board members?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Move to take the third reading by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for approval of board members?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Questions? Could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Stubbard?
Yes.
Counselor LaHovitz?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Here.
You thinking you're in school?
I'm here. Yes, please. Thank you.
Counselor Regal Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Well, you were a school teacher.
Order 172 dash 2014.
Move to read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for the issuance of general obligation laws in the amount of 4.1 million of tax projects?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
This is the bond.
Oh, the bond. Well, nobody spoke up.
Would you like to vote?
Yes.
Yes. Chuck, I'll tell you that remember it from what we talked about a half an hour ago. So, is 2,925,000. That's with two years of capital, of public works, equipment, items. It's with 1 million, the roof, the city hall, which does need to be repaired or replaced, has been reduced down to 25,000. Include the street light traffic signal, I should say, Camden, careful road.
It's only one year of the roof?
It's the short term repair.
Short term, what time is it? The repair we're expecting would be a five year.
I thought it was 25 a year.
A five year lifespan. So that was 2,929,500. 2,922.
922.
And that already includes the changes we made last time, which reduces parking racks from 210 to 85, 87, and fire from 325 down to 150.
Can you say that total one more time? 2.9?
2,2500.
I mean, honestly, I would make an argument for doing the long-term fix to the city's roof. I mean, between what the Opera House did in there and what we did in there, we just spent $1 million on that building, like, we might as well just fix the roof long-term.
Yeah, make it even three point something.
I have another $1,000. I mean, the cost of this bar, I mean, 2 million, it's going to be the same as if you borrow 4 million, so there is that argument you made, too. We don't want to go back out again next year and incur the same costs of bar, which, as Chuck said, could be 40,000 dollars more. The cost of bar. We had leakage on that roof, as a matter of fact, last week, the city hall. It came down through the Opera House stage onto the main floor of city hall, so no question work needs to be done. Obviously, I think it would be best to do the roof in its entirety now, especially with the Opera House having done so much work.
Right, the last thing we want to see is some damage, because-
Did that increase for a vote to 120,000?
Yes, Greg actually got two or three different votes, so-
That's a reliable estimate.
Greg didn't, didn't. What would they really say that it really didn't need a complete replacement?
Right, it was $25,000. That was a very thin band-aid, so they say it's not $5,000 a year, five years. 125,000 is what it's going to be to remove and replace the roof every 20 years. After 15 years, it's done.
But a 20-year guarantee might last 25 years.
That's true.
Because I think to the, whatever that bolt in the roof is, because that's probably where the roof can be, maybe, no, it's the old, the old patch, it's the old, the roof that we have on city hall right now lasts 10 years, 20, 20,000 dollars. The patch, it's the same company, the same system, so not, I believe the patches are a reasonable repair. You can attach it so long, so. We did put a lot of money into that conversation, which is because of those 2006 or 2007, it was ruined by a big spill in the near future. Your call.
Other questions?
Move to amend.
Yes, Ed?
Move to amend the title, and in the paragraphs three and four, strike and replace the number 4,100,000 with a place with 3,22,500.
Second.
Some questions? All those in favor?
Go ahead, move the order as amended.
Second.
I have a motion to make, I have my hand up.
Sorry.
Well, you made a motion, Eric, right?
Yes.
My motion will do the, that we defer the third reading until the next meeting.
Well, we aren't on the third reading yet, right? So-
I have to vote on the second.
Yeah, isn't that what your motion is?
No, my motion is to move the order as amended.
Oh, excuse me, my mistake, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Are you abstaining or opposed?
I'm confused.
We just took the second-
I already voted on the second.
No, no, we voted, we just voted on heads amended.
Amended version.
And then we have to move it as amended, which we just did.
Right.
So, which way are you voting?
I'm opposed.
Opposed, two opposed. Did you get that, Tru? Stubbard and Thomas.
Okay, now I have a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we defer the third reading until the first meeting in January.
Second.
Any discussion?
I feel that we need more time to look at it. We've made some significant cuts today, and there may be more, so I would suggest that we look at it more closely. We had hoped to have an hour today to do that, and had to cut it to half an hour, so I think it would be prudent enough of us to look at it in more detail. That's why I'm making this motion.
And I'm just glad to come to the meeting of this, about figuring out the city budget. It's nothing that we have to have today, it's something we can do in February or later. There can be more discussion.
I think that if I take my step off this fine body, that I've had a lot of time to discuss a lot of these issues, and I want the opportunity to vote.
Anybody else?
LeBron?
Yes?
I'm running, we're getting to bond out, and how many years go after that, which means we'll be paying inside of our taxpayers' dollars. I'd really like for the council to be able to have an opportunity to look at this more. I echo President Stubbard's suggestion that we wait a little bit, and hope the council can look at this more, especially with the new council that we're in. Thank you.
Okay, everybody ready to vote? You know what you're voting on this time?
This is on the motion to delay.
Right, the motion to delay. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so the motion does not carry.
Move to take third reading by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order providing for the issuance of general obligation laws in the amount of 2,000,000, you would choose 5,000?
3,22,500.
Second.
Questions? Could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Stubbard?
No.
Counselor LaHovitz?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Regal Thomas?
No.
Okay, so, the motion passed. Order, hm? Order 173 dash 2014.
Move to read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order authorizing a minimum lock with gross property payment?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Move to take the third reading by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
In order authorizing a minimum lock with gross property payment?
Second.
Questions? Could you read the roll, please?
Yes.
Counselor LaHovitz?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
So now we're going to take the rule of account.
So, yes, what was it?
174.
Now we got the rule of account.
Order 174 dash 2014.
Move three by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait, yeah, all those in favor, Chris? Thank you. Loose tonight.
The resolution providing for ratifying the rule of accounts is number 24.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Yes.
Move to amend by striking the first municipal line, $341,282.20, and replacing with $326,782.20.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Can someone, can someone tell me why?
The accounting thing, right?
There was a school amount that was included in the city park.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's just a clerk.
Yep.
There you go.
Okay, so, the, all in favor of the amendment? Amended version, okay.
Move the resolution as amended?
Second.
All those in favor? Good, thank you. Okay, so, new business, Resolution 175 dash 2014.
The resolution providing for pocket payment, number 05 dash 2014, the result by the City Council, City Waterbell Act, and the city council's group act of payment request number 05 dash 2014, taxes, interest and name charges, tax payments, 12, 13, in the amount of 1,331,520.
Move to table until February 3rd, 2015.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Resolution 176 dash 2014.
The resolution providing for authorizing the issuance of the second license, the EPM Incorporated, A.T.M., Incorporated, A.T.M., Incorporated, A.T.M., Incorporated, A.T.M. Incorporated, A.T.M.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Is anybody here from Echo?
Yeah, it's the-
Eighty?
Or to all?
Okay, all those in favor? Good. Resolution 177 dash 2014.
The resolution providing for authorizing the special use of license to post state having, number 25, 5, the result by the City Council, City Waterbell Act, and the city council hereby authorized, the resolution, the city council hereby authorized, the city council hereby authorized, the city council hereby authorized.
Move to adopt?
Second.
All those in favor? Resolution 178 dash 2014.
Move by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution providing for the issuance of the special use of taxes, A.J., A.J. Incorporated, and the consent of other restaurants.
Move to adopt?
Somebody seconded, two people. Okay, any questions? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Did you get that, Joyce? Resolution 179 dash 2014.
Move three by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution providing for the issuance of the special use of license to post state having, A.L. Incorporated, to issue this case shortly.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Any questions? Did you want to say anything? Anything? Thought you were starting to get up. All right, all those in favor?
I'm abstaining on all of these, Joyce, just saying.
Great, you're good to go. Resolution 180 dash 2014.
Read by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
Resolution providing for the issuance of the special use of license, State, County, Waterbell, Allosee, for the ones that want open.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? And one abstention. Resolution 181 dash 2014.
Move by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution providing for the issuance of the special use of license, the T and A, for business as a nonprofit.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? And one abstention. Resolution 182 dash 2014.
Move three by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution providing for the issuance of the special use of license, Allosee, for business as a nonprofit.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Resolution 183 dash 2014.
Move three by title only?
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution providing for the issuance of the special use of license, the State, County, Reynolds, to introduce this PJ plastic bill.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Questions?
Mike, if the charter, if the charter goes into effect, is all these votes by us, and a new charter?
Is it, why would it do this?
No.
No.
I thought-
I don't see how the license approval would be affected by the new charter.
No, no, we used to put this stuff on the consent agenda, and then we decided not to.
Only for special use.
Only.
Oh, okay.
No question.
And we didn't talk to Chief Bassi on all of these special uses before tonight. He didn't have any objections or recommendations or anything different.
We on the Charter Commission believe that if you aren't getting a repetitive motion injury during city council meetings, you're not doing your job right.
Would you like to speak? Could you come up here and just say who you are, and where, what ward you live in? Please.
I'm Steve Reynolds, I'm a TJ. I'm actually from Winslow.
What?
But I just wanted to let everybody know that. My daughter Taylor won the national championship, the whole United States, she's the best player in the country, and she just went to China for the world championship, and gave her a big kick, in Shanghai.
Wow. That is cool. That is amazing. Congratulate her for us.
Thank you.
She's number one in the country?
United States, yes.
For her age group, or what?
19 and under.
Wow. Who knew? And in Winslow, not Waterville.
What's her name?
Taylor Reynolds.
That's great, good for her.
Spends too much time there, I guess.
Paid off, Joe.
Missed spend years.
Okay, so, all those, do we vote?
No.
All those in favor? Rule, all those in favor? This is the, um.
The last, TJ.
TJ.
It's the last.
That's it, billions, okay, so, all those in favor? Thank you. So you're good to go, too. Yeah. Resolution one eighty-four dash two zero one four.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution providing for the direct management of the city council, the city council, the city board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Questions? No? All those in favor? Resolution one eighty-five dash two zero one four.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
The resolution providing for the lease of Black Bear Aviation.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Yes, you wanna fill us in?
I think Randy has done a good job in his memo.
Yes.
To attach, to explain why we're proposing a change in the lease, it's all good news, because Black Bear Aviation, which was using just a small portion of the hangar, has been busy enough now with aircraft repair and maintenance beneath the entire space. It's caused some problems that some of the space that we've had available for other planes, we've had to find other arrangements for, because there are some owners that keep their plane, have kept their planes in our main hangar during the wintertime, but we've been able to find other hangars on site for those planes to go, so now Black Bear Aviation has really pretty much got full use of our entire main hangar. We keep some of our equipment in that main hangar, and of course, the fees that we've been receiving from them are proposed to go up. The lease that you have is, is, or the lease is attached, and the biggest change in the lease is the provision that we had originally, where there was gonna be a dreadful amount of the small space he was using in the main hangar, plus five percent of work that he would be doing on aircraft. That was chunked in there, that became a nightmare. To figure out on a monthly basis what that five percent amount was. And so, what we're proposing is to rip that lease, the lease, of that provision, the five percent provision, and just charge him a flat amount for the use of that space. I think it's a very fair amount to him, it's rate revenue for us, um, and we certainly wanna see him continue to thrive. The more airplanes he works on, the more traffic we get, the more fuel we sell, the more revenue we get, the better our bottom line looks.
What, what's happening with the detailing business? Is that staying in that little corner, is that gone too?
It hasn't been doing.
They haven't been there much, but they have that little office.
Right, but they didn't even renew the lease to us. I think he's hoping to come back sometime, but the business just didn't seem to be there for cleaning. And, and Black Bear may, may be doing some of that cleaning, too, although their, their focus is more on the heavy duty maintenance.
Are they doing jets, Black Bear?
I'm sorry?
Do they do jets?
Not yet, they're, they're planning.
They're going to. Well, uh, tell Randy thank you for all the work.
I will, he was unable to be here tonight because of a family emergency. I will convey that.
Uh, okay, all those in favor? The lease, great, thank you. Good, it's great. Exciting.
Thanks for the second, do this, Madam Chair. Quick question, unanimous consent to take all, uh, resolutions, one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, and one ninety as a single vote?
Second.
Excellent suggestion.
And Mike, man, you can kinda summarize what these are all involving?
Well, we promised you at the last meeting this would be coming, and what we're trying to do is some long, long, overdue housekeeping with many accounts that have been sitting on our books for years. Finally, the auditors said, guys, you gotta go to the council and get them to approve transfers, um, and get these accounts cleaned up. So the first one, we see is a proposal to transfer unspent money into our surplus, so our surplus is gonna grow by thirty-one thousand, nine forty-five, into the undesignated fund balance, and then I think all the others are self-explanatory, so I'd be happy to answer questions on those, one at a time. But let me just give you a brief highlight on each one, then. Please stop me. That takes care of one eighty-seven, uh, one eighty-eight.
You skip one eighty-seven, one eighty-seven talks about a hundred seventy-eight thousand for pool.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just talked about one eighty-six. Thank you, one eighty-seven is the recreation fund, this is an important one, because of the amount, so. What the city has had for many years is what's called a recreation fund within our budget, and that fund, fund, was the, uh, receivable for revenues that come in to the city from our recreation programs, and it was always kept in a separate account, those revenues were. Now we're proposing those revenues, as they come in in the future, they just go into our general fund pool, not be segregated out, there's really no reason to segregate them out, and then the auditors agree. And so, close out that recreation fund, we're proposing two things, well, actually, one thousand four ninety-nine was a donation to the city for skate park improvements, so that is reserved, committed for that purpose, we accepted it for that purpose, and we're gonna keep that in a, in a special reserve for that purpose. But the remaining amount, one seventy-eight, oh forty-nine, is money that Matt and I are proposing to put in to the pool, repair account. You heard about that earlier, with our capital improvement deeds, that someday, that pool, which is now.
It'll be twenty years old this season.
It was built, it was built in the early 1990s.
Fifteen, fifteen. Wasn't it built in the?
It was built in two thousand, two thousand one.
Maybe construction began in ninety, ninety.
Anyway, anyway. It's close, it's close, someday.
Why don't you ask the board member?
Someday, it's gonna need major repair, and so our thought is to create this reserve account to provide for them, it'll be reserved for period repair, it won't be spent, of course, without council approval at any point in time. We had an emergency last year.
Your four lives, yeah, my, my.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand dollars for a water line that drove. Fortunately, we had an existing account, so, does this one seventy-eight, oh forty-nine, gonna be the total?
Is there another amount to have reserve?
No, that's all.
No, that's all.
That's all.
We don't have an existing.
We don't have an existing pool reserve.
Of that, of that one seventy-eight, there's forty-eight thousand of that, that was already reserved indirect.
So we're saying, we have forty-eight, let's add to it, the other hundred thirty, and move it over into the capital fund, and then it doesn't close that everywhere.
So we, so we.
Because the city had, the city had been for a time when revenues were much stronger than they are today, we had been for a time putting fifteen thousand a year, some of you are in emergency, and that had grown to sixty thousand.
We spent twelve.
We spent twelve, that left forty-eight, that forty-eight is now gonna be added to one thirty to make the one seventy.
Okay, so my mistake, we did not actually vote on this yet to take it all as one group, but, um.
We did, you made this one send up, we sent it.
Oh, all right, great.
Move to adopt resolutions one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, and one ninety.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you, we can have a nine-hundred number, we can like call, and maybe come up with these, uh.
Parliamentary.
Parliamentary stuff, yeah. Maybe an eight-hundred number.
Any other? Nice. Questions on these?
I think they're important.
Yeah, too late now. Okay, then. Uh, we're on, hm?
One ninety-one?
One ninety-one.
Order number one ninety-one dash two zero one four.
Read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
The order providing for sale of one, an incorporation of one designated fund balance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Questions?
The number housekeeping measure, famous, five two four.
All those in favor? Great. Order one ninety-two dash two zero one four.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
An order providing for sale of one seventeen dash nineteen eight, as a priority.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Well, this is very, this is very good news, because we advertised this property for sale back in the summer, we got absolutely no response, it's a very, very small lot, I think you all got a copy of the map, uh, it's isolated off College Avenue, near the cemetery, out back to Harold's Cemetery, and we're very happy that one of the owners has said, yeah, we're on the purpose, because it has really no use for the city, and very limited value.
Good, questions? All those in favor? Good, great. Okay, the moment you've all been waiting for, ordinance one ninety-three dash two zero one four.
Move to adopt, LeBron.
Second.
We're just gonna read it, the title first.
Oh, sorry, read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
The ordinance providing for amendments to celebrate waste.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Questions?
Actually, here's a question.
Yes?
So, right now, if someone were to put a regular trash bag out, would the city that figure out?
No, I don't think so. I think there are provisions in the ordinance that allow the director of public works to, um, administer, to trash pickup program, so, no, I certainly don't agree that.
One dash four B, kind of the.
One dash four B, difficult.
Well, I think, why is it maybe striking out empty containers, they'll be removed from sidewalk or curb on the same day wasted? Don't we wanna do that? We, don't we want people to take their trash cans in, like, to sit down, probably?
That would, that would rework the section of the Williams. Ah ha. It's right above that, eh? Did you highlight it in yellow right above that?
Yep.
So we get your, read it back.
These were. These were. Changes largely recommended by Mark and Bob or Public Works, it's my fault that language dumb, I language on my desk for a few weeks, maybe even a couple of months, obviously, it should've been done back in the summer, when we first approved the page of droppings, or in September, anyway, um, they went through the ordinance, saying, so we're gonna make changes for pages of droppings, uh, we decided to clean up anything else, we thought was out of date. Obviously, if the vote in June determines that people don't wanna write pages of droppings, change the ordinance back to whatever.
Can you say who you are, please?
Yeah, LeBron Kyra, for, uh, for, uh, for six, um, I'm just wondering, so is there a disagreement between, uh, the manager, McRoy, and the steward in the ordinance?
I don't think that's any of your concern.
I was wondering about the statement that they were said should be picked up.
Well, if you believe I'm a lawyer, then you can read that statement.
Okay. All right, well, I'm not a lawyer either, so, and I, um, so, my concern about this is that we are also facing potential three mil increase, um, in the future, we're already funding our money, which is the past, and, well, I noticed that, uh, Council Starbuck, you did mention in favor that, uh, the city does have a spending problem.
I agree.
And I agree, the city does have a spending problem, is the taxpayers are spending too much on taxes and on the lease.
Okay, anybody else? All those in favor? Okay.
I almost voted, I saw it.
I saw, did you vote, you, right, okay, I just wanted to say this. What?
Seven.
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 Seven. Three, seven, was it?
Everybody voted yes.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Oh, I didn't think the French did.
Yes, you did.
Yep.
Six and a half votes.
You just can't.
Putting it on the record.
Okay, I just wanna say that in my last meeting after three years, I remembered to ask to call the roll on the third vote. It only took me three years for that, but, I did it.
I didn't have to remind her once.
She didn't, you didn't. So, Mike, do you have a manager's report?
No, but.
What?
I don't.
Really?
Yes. I do, I do wanna add my thanks, and thank you, John, and we get to be recognized, Ted, Karen, and Eric, certainly the time you put in has no bear, has no relationship to what you get paid for meetings, and I very much appreciate your time after all this, especially your energy.
Oh, that's very charitable of you. Really.
It's that energy.
Mike and I had a conversation even before I started about Myers-Briggs training, and how we are the exact opposites in, um, the way we get our energy, look at data, make decisions, and it's.
But we met in the middle.
Yes, most of the time we did, and I totally appreciate the very difficult position that the city manager is in with the change in administration every three years, and a change in cultures every, every year, so it's not an easy job, I don't envy his job, and I won't be applying for his job. So, thank you, yes, you may.
I just wanna say it's been a pleasure to serve on the council, um, I think we've accomplished a lot in the last three and a half years, um, and before that, but in the last three and a half years is when I was involved, um, and I just wanna say that I hope, you know, with the new councils coming on, that people always remember that these are real people up here, um, you know, and they're trying, whether you agree with them or not, they're just trying to do what they think is best for the city, and so, they don't deserve to be personally attacked, um, they don't, you know, they deserve the same respect that you expect back from them when you speak to them, um, you know, I think sometimes people think just because you're a public official, they're allowed to insult you and yell at you and call you names, um, and they don't expect that you're gonna respond, um, and I just hope that people keep And I just hope that people keep in mind that these are just real people up here, that you're neighbors, they're trying to do the best thing for the city, whether you agree with them or not, and, you know, show them the respect that they deserve. You agree?
I have a little bit of a shorter tenure than that, but I'm grateful for having had the opportunity. So I could learn a lot, and I had to learn a lot in a hurry, for the, for the get this job done. But I feel I did it, and that I've been able to provide something of value, which I've been looking for. And I'm also, I guess I got the other side of it. I'm really glad for the time that I got to spend with folks out in the community. I feel like I had a lot of respectful conversations with people whom, which I strongly disagreed on all sorts of things, particularly page of the stroke. And I feel like I was able to walk away from a lot of those conversations with, you know, while we're agreeing to disagree, that we respect where one another are coming from and that in the end, we're all residents of Waterville and we want to get stuff done in the city.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'd like to wish you all a very, yes! So sorry, thank you.
I just wanted to remind everyone that everyone is invited to the swearing-in ceremony in January, I forgot the date.
Six?
Six.
Six o'clock?
And it's a, it's a, I think it's a great event and it's a great way to celebrate the city and to meet your city councilors and to meet the mayor and the new mayor. And so, I think the community should come out and celebrate the city and start 2015 in a very positive and community-oriented way. And it's a great way to start, so be sure to be there. It's at, it's gonna be here at the Waterville Aqua House and then right after is the very first city council meeting with the new mayor and city council seat, so.
And a reception, too.
And a reception.
So, happy holidays, shop locally, and be safe. Thank you.